Cast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Now, in order, and for agenda item number one, we have our economic forecast, and we're going to call in Mr. Jim Rounds of Rounds Consulting to present. And, Mr. Rounds, I look forward to your presentation. As always, it's always great and informative.
Mr. Chairman members, it's always good to see you. I think it was a couple of months ago, we were here and we talked economics just a little bit in relation to the budget. This one's a little bit more of an economic overview that'll help you with some decision-making prospectively, where the last one was more explaining the data that supported the forecast and the budget development. So, let's get into it. Want to talk about what's going to happen the next couple of years, very briefly, and then leave some time for Q and A, as always. Just covered the introduction. So, let's cover federal government a little bit. There's always a lot of good economic data, and there's also economic data that you think is good that isn't, depending on what you're looking at. And GDP is going to be one of those categories where it's going to be a little bit difficult to tell quarter-to-quarter exactly what's going on. Normally, GDP is a statistic that people very much rely on to identify if there's a recession. However, the time of identifying a recession based on two consecutive quarters of declines in GDP actually ended about five decades ago. Other variables are looked at as well, but one of the issues that came up, which is why it went negative, and that's a statistic two quarters ago, was its consumption. So, everything that we're purchasing, plus investment, so what we're putting money into, plus government spending, of course, plus exports, and then you subtract out imports. And so, what happened because of the tariff issue is that we had a number of businesses advancing their imports, and so it pushed GDP down. But, it really has to do with how GDP was originally designed, that import calculation. It was a correction for some deficiencies, but it's still persistent in the formula, because if you think about it, if you buy a car, Mercedes, did you really reduce GDP? No, that just doesn't make sense. So, I always like to look at the statistics, and regardless of how complicated the explanation is, or you have a PhD from Columbia explaining a bunch of history and what happened in the 1960s, if you just think about it, if I'm buying something from out of the country, did I reduce GDP in the US? And the answer is no. So, the statistics for GDP the prior quarter weren't as bad as we would have thought. But then you had a recovery that wasn't as good as you would have expected. So, I'm not going to be relying on GDP nearly as much. That decline, it's irrelevant. I just pretty much cross that out. And then we had some growth, but it was supported growth from getting back into balance a little bit. So, when you hear about the GDP statistics for the next couple or three quarters, you're going to see import issues come into play. It's really going to depend on federal government policy, and then you'll be able to decide, is this something that we want to start looking at?
Mr. Rounds, I think there is a question.
Thank you. I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Can you speak to the drop in government spending, economic stimulator? I want to be sure that you touch on that.
Mr. Chairman members, so, we went through a period, and I'll touch on this a little bit later, but let me cover it right now, real quick. So, we went through a period where we added 10 trillion to our national debt in about four years. That wasn't sustainable. All that extra borrowing was spent throughout the economy, and eventually, it went into government spending, which then went into private sector spending, or directly into private sector pockets, and that boosted activity. And so, now, we're cutting back to try to normalize issues. That's greatly reducing the G on there. And, when you do it quarter-to-quarter, you don't notice it as much. When, if you looked at GDP year-over-year, or over a longer period of time, and you're comparing to one of those really high-spending federal government years, then it looks like, well, the government spending number would be really significantly downward. It's always positive, though. It's just not as positive as it was before. So, that's actually a good catch. In fact, that's so good, I'm going to have to highlight G in there, as well as the import issue.
Thank you.
So, the odds of a recession happening, this is happening this year, is still greater than 50%. And, these are the different things that groups look at to identify if there was a recession. They look at income, employment, wholesale, retail sale.
We're going to switch your microphone. I think yours is on the scratch.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. The one that I find the most interesting on this, defining a recession, though, is there is no fixed rule. That means there's an awful lot of flexibility in identifying when we go into a recession and when we come out of it. But, what I like about this method versus just looking at, say, the GDP numbers, which would give the wrong impression right now, is that a lot of other statistics are looked at. So, we'll be able to tell when a recession actually occurred. But, in my experience over the last two to three decades, we are always out of a recession, or midway through a recession, before we even knew that the recession began. In fact, back when 9/11 happened, we, everybody said, we just entered a recession. Technically, we entered a recession at the beginning of the year, and we exited before that, the attack even happened. We had no idea, because there's corrections in the data, there's lags. And so, when you hear the data's not showing a recession just yet, it's not a guarantee. It still could, we still potentially could be in a recession period.
Yeah, Mr. Rounds, I have a question, and then the vice chair has a question. So, if the odds are greater than 50% that we'll have a recession this year, we're already in mid-August, I mean, the year's almost over, and you're talking about if we come out of a recession, people think we're in a recession. Does that mean there's a great likelihood that we're in a recession right now?
Mr. Chairman, I do not believe we're in a recession right now. My best guess, and I'm in the less than 50% category, is that if we're going to have one, it won't show up until this next calendar year, which means it'll be spread over potentially two fiscal years, which is better in terms of budget management. If you get hit at the beginning of a fiscal year, you have to make a lot of budget adjustments. But if it's spread over two, even if it's still a typical eight, nine-month recession, it'll dampen it. So, my hope is that it won't happen until February, March, but it's difficult to predict. We might not even go into one. We might just have significant slowing, but with the government reductions, spending reductions, the tariffs, we were already seeing some weakness in the economy moving forward. It was like a plane slowly landing anyways. So, I do think that we're due one, but it's not necessarily a bad thing to go through a downturn, because it forces private sector businesses and government to clean house a little bit, as long as it's not severe. If it's so severe that you have to raise taxes, like after the Great Recession, and make some really tough decisions on letting people go, that's different than having some good budget management that if you prepare for it properly, won't impact you nearly as severely.
Before I go to the vice chair, was I was reading in the Wall Street Journal this morning, and obviously, the stock market is not the entire indicator of the economy, but the stock market has been going up this year steadily, and it seems like that's an indication of confidence in the future. And one of the things that they point out in this article this morning is that companies are reporting earnings higher than expected. How does that square with the notion that odds are still greater than 50% for a recession?
Mr. Chairman, so, greater than expected was actually greater than we're getting concerned. So, it doesn't mean quite as much as normal. There are some industries that are still doing well, and there are some industries that are doing poorly. We're seeing some tough spots in manufacturing, especially high-tech, which could impact us disproportionately later. So, looking at the individual articles, what I like to do is look at the individual articles, look at the individual data points, but group them, and see what maybe three or four of them tell me. So, you might see a weak GDP number, and a weak employment number, and then the unemployment rate is still very low, and there's some other signal that maybe we're going to see a little boost in employment down the road. There's just so many moving parts. What's happening right now is that the federal government is impacting what's happening on a quarterly basis in the economy, more than it has in a long time, because the prior years, the federal government impacted the economy more than it had probably ever, except for wartime. So, COVID really threw us out of whack, but a lot of our problems stem from the Great Recession, where we were number one in growth in almost every category, and we fell to 50th in one quarter. We were behind Michigan, which meant Detroit was doing better than Greater Phoenix for a quarter back then. We finished at 49, but that also gave us the opportunity to implement public policy. That completely changed the economic landscape in the state.
Thank you. With your comments on the first slide, now on this slide, not just the slides, but your fill-in comments, I can kind of hold up shop and go away. But I wanted to, it's excellent. I wanted to gain some further insights. The definition of recession, and I'm not trying to make it personal, but I think every, every woman in the room will understand that, one of the things I found out is that you don't know you're in menopause until well after. And that's what this sounds like. And, I think that is the most stupid diagnosis, but, anyway. I wanted to focus on the fact that recession, the word recession has become highly politicized, and is associated with the policies of the prior administration, or the incoming administration, and the things that they are trying to do from a policy perspective to run the country. And I called to mind a couple of quotes. My husband loves economics. He talks about Larry Summers is highly lauded for correctly predicting a recession 11 of the last three occurrences. And also, the John Maynard Keynes quote, that if you predict a recession long enough, it'll happen. So, I was wondering if you could pull it back a little, de-politicize it, and tell us where in the heck we are as a state?
Sure. Mr. Chairman members, I agree with you, with everything you said. And, like I mentioned, you don't know that you're in a recession until you actually are well into it. But, from a budgeting perspective, you're collecting revenue based on actual activity, not whether or not we're in a recession. It's, here's how much people are spending, and here's how much you're collecting. So, that makes the, kind of the philosophical discussion of a recession, a little bit different than the practical application of it, which is, look at government tax revenue. The number-one economic data point that I look at, whether it's national or in Arizona, is employment. And, the number-two is a variety of state and local tax collections, because there's surveys out there that ask people, how do you feel about the economy? And if there's a very negative story, or something happened, they'll say, I'm not feeling too good. And then, they say, well, are you going to cut back on your spending? And they say, no, the Super Bowl's coming up. Why would I cut back? I need a new TV, and I have to buy a new couch, and I'm having friends over. So, looking at actual collections helps, and that's what your staff track, and we help track that for you. So, it's more of a real-time measure of what's happening, and that gets past that issue of, even if the recession started, but collections didn't fall off a cliff yet, it's still, for budgeting purposes, it's the collections that matter.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I were to call it the Rounds methodology, that'd get me where you are?
I think that would be great, if you wanted to start calling it that.
Yes, I do. So, thank you very much.
Well, when we brought in ROI analyses at the state, some of the committee chairs said to others, you need to start using the Rounds ROI calculation. I figured, well, we hit it big, if it's actually been labeled that, but somebody will take it within a short period of time, I'm sure. Very good questions. Here's some other data points. And, the reason I put in something as simple as weak or strong on these slides, is I don't want to put in too much emphasis on the exact data point, for the same reasons that we've just been talking about. And so, when you look at employment, is it weak? Well, we were expecting employment growth to fall below 100,000 by midsummer. That's usually where you start to get worried about a downturn. I promise I didn't hit a button. There we are. Asking good questions, providing excellent economic answers, as usual. There we go. So, the question about the 73,000, whether or not it's a real number or not, my answer when I had to give several interviews on this topic was, one, there's also another survey where it collects private sector data, totally independent source of data, and they had around 100,000 jobs versus the 73,000. In the prior month, they had 25,000 job loss. So, it's pretty consistent with the revision. Now, why did the revision happen at that scale? We stopped to figure that out in some detail. But, when there's a lot of different things happening in the economy, and there's, especially the public policy-induced ones, you have issues related to, like, let's say, you don't like what I was doing, and the budget was tight, and you cut our services, and this was my only consulting gig. I would be out of job, but it really was a government decision to reduce it, but it was a private sector job loss. You have a lot of consultants providing services to corporations and others, and that kind of confuses whose jobs are getting lost, because they're not picked up in all the surveys. So, you have to look at more than normal. But, the number is about what we would have expected, and so, that data came out literally two hours before I had to meet with my financial advisor, and it had absolutely no impact on our discussion whatsoever, because this was to be expected. The other point that I made was...
Jim, I'm sorry. I'm just saying, moving my mic.
The other point that I made was, yes, the new director of BLS is an economist, but my question is, is the director of BLS going to be doing regression equations, and doing all the complicated stuff, or is he going to be doing press releases, and meetings, and other things, and he's going to be, and staff are going to be putting things together? So, it doesn't matter to me if the director of BLS is an economist or not. The key is to make sure that staff are very strong. Everything leads back to staff, even what happens here. It's important to have strong staff.
Adam, vice chair.
So, I'm sure you read the story in the Wall Street Journal about the two BLS ladies in a small town, I think in Montana, who used fax machines, and they would go out and look at car lots, and car prices on car lots. My hope, again, this has been a horribly politicized position. The private sector already produces the data that government needs to actually put out accurate and current information without revising it up or down months later. Is that an accurate? Please challenge me if I'm wrong, but I'm hoping that's where we go to, keeping track of the national employment changes.
So, on the private sector component, it's a different way of collecting the data, and even though I think government overreaches quite a bit, especially at the federal and even though I think government overreaches quite a bit, especially at the federal government level, I feel like the collection of data is not overreach. The more data we have, the better off we are because if data isn't accurate, when we look at all these economic data points, you're only going to see a small fraction of what's in the master file. It's like 400 slides long. Yet, when we look at it, we like to tell a story. Is it, are things consistent? If one of the data points is not consistent, then we know either the data point's wrong or our story is wrong. And so, when the employment numbers came in the prior two months, the thing that was bothering me is those numbers are higher than they should be. You can just tell because we looked at the other pieces, too. So, there's ways of checking, but I'm all for having multiple methods of collecting The faxing of some of that data, that isn't something that I would recommend. Maybe we need, maybe the county needs to develop a best practices handbook on how to collect data, and then we can send it to our congressional delegation to pass along. But it shouldn't be rocket science in order to figure out the best way of collecting data. One of the biggest, the only statistic that I saw that I was concerned about is we used to have about a 65% response rate. It went down to around 40, 45. That's still more, it's still more of a sample than what you'd need to be fairly accurate, but that opens up the door for errors, and so I think we need to communicate better. I don't know if BLS has a good communications team that reaches out to let the businesses know how important it is for the data to be collected. Large corporations, it's already transmitted. They just have formulas set up in the database and when they, and it shoots out data to the federal government, and that picks up the majority of it, but it doesn't pick up what I'm doing in that month, and no one asked me what I'm doing on that month, but I'm hoping they asked enough others that are like me, smaller businesses and others that make up the backbone of the economy, how they're doing.
Thank you.
The unemployment rate is still very solid. Consumer confidence, I call it fair because it's a slightly downward trend, but I think there's a couple of things going on. I think people are concerned about the stories about the tariffs, and there are negative economic issues related to the tariffs. They're concerned about the stories, but then they see their financial portfolio and the strong stock market, and they feel a little bit better. In fact, I think the stock market probably influences consumer confidence more than even, you know, dramatic stories about terrorism in Europe or war. I think if somebody sees their, what they worked for their entire lives dropped by 20%, which it dropped by almost 20% not that long ago, and then it recovered quickly. And I remember that specifically because I was going to make some investments and my buy was a 20% decline, and we hit like 19. So, even, I look at this stuff for a living, and you can't time the, you can't time the market. You just have to be slow and kind of stable with it. But consumer confidence is still at an okay level, so I call it fair. Share of homes affordable, the median income families, very low percentage, and so I call that bad, even though when you read reports on it, it says we have a strong housing market because prices are high. Well, they're artificially high because a number of things happened that started after the Great Recession. And so, being high because of inefficiencies is different than being high because of the economy working well. So, I list this as an issue that has to be resolved, and some policymakers are looking at it, not everybody. There are some additional solutions. I'm disappointed in the way that the states looked at it. There are some non-cost recommendations that we had the last two years that there was no interest in, but when an election year is coming up, all of a sudden, some lawmakers become interested in having some clever ideas in their back pocket.
Mr. Rounds, I want to talk to you here about affordability. I think this is just an important national issue. I also see it as a generational issue as well. We're seeing it a lot more with younger people, with younger families, people either coming out of college or young families with a child or a child on the way, and it's just becoming increasingly hard for them to find places to live that are affordable. The statistics I have seen of the first-time homebuyer seems to increase by the year. And so, now, it used to be decades ago that if you're a first-time homebuyer, you're probably in your late twenties, maybe 30 years old. Now, it's people in their late thirties, almost 40. I think it's really affected the millennial generation and the generations after that. But also, I think it's also harder for people, frankly, who are older, but also more inclined to vote. It's not an issue that is important to them, which is fair because they're not impacted by it, and voters vote on issues that, how they impact them. Maybe they say it through their child or their grandchild, but it's not directly impacting them. So, this is something I have struggled with in terms of how are we able to get everyone collectively to jump on board in this affordability issue? Because on the other hand, I also see demagogues taking advantage of the issue. And case in point is in New York City with this guy who's most likely going to be the mayor of New York, Mamdani, who's using the affordability issue to say, you know what? That's why we need grocery run, government-run grocery stores, and that's why we need to do price controls on rent. I do want to highlight one legislator, Shauna Bolick. I think she's done a really good job of highlighting this issue. I wish more people over there at the legislature would do that as well. I think she's really keyed in on something. Are there, there are things that, at the state, there's only so much that the county can do. Are there things at the state level that you would like to see the governor and the legislature work on from your perspective in terms of addressing affordability over the next few years?
Mr. Chairman, the answer is a very strong yes. To some extent, the nature of the economy has impacted the ability of some home builders to follow their old financial model, and so there's economics behind it, and that's why it's not just an Arizona issue. However, and I brought this up before, at any given time, my office has worked, has been working with two or three different developers that are trying to build apartments in different cities, and they're getting pushed back for the dumbest reasons. In fact, it was so infuriating, I offered to do a follow-up to one client and waived the fee because I said, this is just completely wrong. So, it's not, it's not completely a city issue, but the cities can improve the way they do things, and I think that that's been discussed a lot. The state has spent money in the past on LHTC-type projects, using the Housing Trust Fund for different projects, and we're able to subsidize, you know, a few hundred homes here, a few hundred homes there. An idea that a colleague came up with, it was two or three years ago, and we pushed the last two years because we did a little bit more math on it, was we wanted to take, in the Greater Phoenix area, all of the old strip malls that are no longer generating any sales tax for the cities, which means their property, again, they're mostly vacant, their property tax values are very low. We freeze the property tax at the current rate, and so the cities aren't out anything. And that's the incentive for a developer to come in and convert it into multifamily. Our very rough back-of-the-napkin estimate, we haven't formally analyzed it yet, but we may end up just doing it and doing a paper on it just because we're a little frustrated, is that we should be able to build about 40,000 housing units just with that one piece of legislation that costs people nothing. It costs taxpayers nothing. Why not jump on that when the economy's slowing? You got to bring your own money to the table when it comes to public policy when the economy's slowing. You can't go in and say, I need $100 million of taxpayer money for this. This will cost nothing. This has to become a bill this coming year, and we do need to resolve that issue with the cities, but we also have to acknowledge that not everything is their fault. Otherwise, we'd have the problems just in the state.
Okay. And I have one more comment, and then Madam Vice Chair would like to weigh in as well. So, thank you for your perspective on what they can do from the state level in terms of policy, but you keyed in on something that also made me remember something. So, the cities really are frustrating for me at the county perspective because we are overlay over the cities, but we can't tell the cities what to do. So, for example, I know a developer who was building an eight-unit multifamily apartment complex in downtown Phoenix. I mean, literally in the shadows of the tall buildings we have here, an infill project on a vacant lot. Watching him go through the experience of trying to build eight units was just an absolute nightmare. The term, the number of times that permit inspectors had to come back and review the same thing over and over and over again, including giving him conflicting messages. One, telling him, your fence has to be built this way, and then he does it to comply. Then another inspector comes back another time and says, no, your fence needs to be built this way, and he does it to comply. Then the original inspector comes back and says, why did you do that? All of these issues with HVAC, whatever, whatever. And the costs were built in over time, over the delay of these projects, but at the same time, people who are desperate to find affordable housing were driving by the project and were contacting him and saying, hey, we'd love to check it out. We'd love to move in here. This is a great location. And he had to tell them, no, I'm sorry, we're not ready to open yet because we're still waiting on the city. And so, for me, as a free-market proponent, and I always say I'm pro-market, not pro-business, pro-developer, pro-market, let the market dictate, it's just frustrating to see it happen in real time for just eight units and just multiply that across the city, across many cities, across many states, and it just, that's how we have the problem we have now. It's just been completely exacerbated, especially since we didn't recover in the amount of units that needed to be built coming out of the Great Recession, and it's impacting everyone, Democrat, Republican, Independent, and my fear is that people are going to be searching for political voices that are extremists on both sides, whether that's populism on the right or the left, which is kind of like a sugar rush, but it doesn't really satisfy the long-term questions or answers. So, thank you for that. Okay. Madam Vice Chair.
Appreciate your comments about the abandoned strip malls. I think that's a wonderful idea. One of the things that, I was on the Washington School Board, which is the largest elementary school district in the state. We had 31 schools, now 31 Title IX, Title I. At any rate, we wanted, one of the things we might look at with a fixed asset, like a school building and grounds and playgrounds and high school district, you have, but your enrollment is declining to the point where the number of students you have in the school aren't enough to carry even the fixed costs, much less the operational costs of the teachers, et cetera. Would be converting some of those schools to starter housing, low-income housing, police, fire, nurses, with the idea then that you, with these new families, you grow the population to attend adjoining schools. In Washington, our philosophy, we had a superintendent long ago who believed you should build a school kind of every mile or two miles apart within residential neighborhoods. So, I keep going back to that. If you ever write that paper, I'd love your thoughts on that, too. So, thank you.
If I may respond to that quickly, that's actually another project that we're looking at. So, Chad Gueston, who was with Phoenix, he came up with the concept of developing a K-12 innovation sandbox. And the sandbox is basically a way of getting through some regulations so that you can have things like the driverless vehicles and things like that. So, we started brainstorming, and we had to do a short-term rental analysis for Sedona, and we thought that was going to just be the poster child community for short-term rentals. It ended up being very much an analysis of how do we get the workers that can't afford to live there regardless into the area? And one of the ideas was there's empty government buildings and not full schools. Why can't we convert maybe the old kindergarten, first-grade classrooms into a discounted daycare and have the school charge below market-rate rent? And then the company coming in to manage it will have the discount so that they can make a normal profit, and all of a sudden, we have no cost extra daycare for the workers and the schools are making a little extra money, and there's restrictions on their ability to do that. So, on the sandbox, one of the things that we're thinking about throwing into it is the ability to modify or liquidate some of these properties, and sometimes it might be completely raising a property, others, it might be if it's a newer school that was built because of an artificial formula. Can it be converted into office? And can the ball fields maybe be converted into some housing? And can we use that as an opportunity to have some housing for the teachers and others? But also, you can have retail in there and others, and so it's making additional money. So, I'm really hoping that this idea takes off. The one on the freezing the property tax is pretty straightforward. You can do calculations. You can figure out how many this could apply to, and you can do some pretty hard calculations. This other one is going to get a little political, but I feel like if we have those resources, why not do it where it's been, who's not going to benefit from that? The schools will benefit, the developers will benefit, the public will benefit, and who will benefit the most? The taxpayers, because it costs them nothing once again, and then we built another 15,000 housing units. All of a sudden, we're near the threshold on what we're short, and we haven't spent any taxpayer money yet. We have to get some of these things implemented. So, I think it's fascinating that you thought of the exact same things that we're looking at behind the scenes, and we really haven't gone that public with how we want to formulate this because we have to have the right partners, and it could be challenging.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's a fabulous idea. I wanted to go back. My first comment was actually going to be to your zoning task force, and there are a lot of issues they're considering, but I honestly think what I'm most excited about is the, once again, dialing back the regulations and making the, making the whole concept of zoning and planning and zoning user-friendly. And I have been following the work of the task force very closely, and if it is not a shining example for those government entities that wanted to take a look and say, this is how it gets done, I don't know what is. So, I just wanted to compliment you on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. Great questions and love this discussion about housing. You know, it's funny, being in city council in Chandler, we did a deep dive. I think you actually may have visited us once while we were talking about this housing issue, at least for the last five years.
That's where it originated.
Exactly, exactly. And so, what we recognized very quickly, right, is the pathway to the American dream is homeownership, right? It affects every demographic, every income level. If you can own your home, you can create generational wealth, and we're seeing that stripped away. It's causing frustration for younger millennials and Gen Z, and so we're looking at what policies we can adopt, and I think there's a lot of fingers being pointed at councils, some rightfully, and others are being pointed at the permitting process, et cetera. What we noticed back from 2008, and there's still a ripple effect from the recession, the loss of the number of builders, right, declined by about 40%. You have labor costs, you have material inflation as well, you have interest rates that are pushing the headwinds against this. You have population growth, which is a little different here than in Detroit. But I remember that we had 2,400 units permitted in Chandler that had yet to come to the council for permitting. So, it's very, very easy for builders to say, well, if these guys would just permit faster, if they would just, you know, disregard the International Federation of Firefighters' recommendation for how we build, then we could just get everything done. The reality is, we did that in Chandler, and it didn't happen. They're just not coming out of the ground, and there's a number of, it's not the builder's fault, but I think it's important that we recognize the entire industry here and what we're trying to accomplish because that isn't the magic, the magic brush, if you will. I will say that the word nimbyism has come out quite a bit, and that is definitely something that I think as leaders, and this is probably the role of us, is to talk about policy as it relates to building industry to create jobs for our kids as they grow up is as important as building housing for them as well. And so, we have to create this sort of discussion about, you know, where's that balance at? And have those conversations with our neighbors and do that listening tour. But this is more of me to kind of share the other side of the coin of sitting in that chair for eight years and understanding that everybody's pointing their fingers at mayors and councils, and the reality is, is that we're permitting, right? We are approving, I should say, we're approving. And sometimes these builders just don't come forward because we know there's a bit of a Ponzi on upzone, right? Go from ag to industrial, go from ag to multifamily, and then you sit on it and sell it to somebody else, and that happens occasionally. So, from the role of the county, and Chairman is absolutely right, right? There's not much that we can do other than do our best to expedite permitting processes here so we can speed to shelf as quickly as we can, and I know that, I think all of us are committed to doing that, but I appreciate this. And if we can get more builders, cheaper materials, faster permitting, all these things, I think this, and people to quit moving to a wonderful state like Arizona, which we don't want, I think we can hopefully change this trajectory and make housing more affordable. But I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, on that, of all the projects where we've worked on where we were just shocked that they weren't going to be approved, we didn't have any in Chandler. We did have one of your neighbors once summarize is not wanting to approve something that might have been the best match for the property that we've ever seen by saying that it didn't produce the right vibe. by saying that it didn't produce the right vibe. So, vibe must be either a government or an economic term that I'm not utilizing enough. So, I'll have to start using vibe, which means, don't look at data, but how do you feel about something in general? But that's how bad it is in some other communities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great, great presentation, as always. I'm glad we're having this, this small conversation around housing, because housing has been an issue here in Maricopa County, in the state of Arizona, much more than five years. I mean, when I got here in 2015, the number one call we would get was around housing. And I remember even some of our own forecasts we had back then in 2016, I'd bring up the word housing. How, what are we doing in terms of housing? Housing number one issue continues. It has just grown even more so now than ever before. And I can tell, just real quickly, even as a policymaker at the legislature, I was there for twelve years, and I look back at my twelve years, and it's a shame on me. I don't recall ever having a discussion during my twelve years at the legislature around housing or homeless. It was never talked about. It wasn't. And it's shame, shame on all of us. And I'll be the first one to point the finger at me. We just never had it. All the different issues we talked about, they may have some discussions now, but there was never really any discussion. I think we had one bill, looking back at homelessness, where we added a bucket to the lottery funding that we added. That went away a few, several years ago. But I don't know what the state right now is doing around the issue of housing and homeless. It's just, is this happening? That's just shame on us. I think from a county perspective, I think there's a lot we can do. I think there's a lot we can do. But one is particularly being an advocate. Fourth-largest county in this country. Go down the Capitol and raise hell and say, hey, this is an issue, a statewide issue, not just Maricopa County. It impacts all fifteen counties. And it's a, when it comes to housing, this is something that we need to do. In terms of the, it was interesting, as you were starting your presentation, I looked up the, and real quickly, on, when we talked about affordable housing, it's like, what's your definition of affordable, really? It really is. Because a lot of these projects, I'm no fool. I mean, I'm sitting there watching. And you can call them affordable? Affordable to who? I'm sorry. I see these projects we, we have where a lot of funding, particularly public and private funding, and like, we're not buying land. Where's our money going? I'm just throwing it out there, guys. But anyways, I'm back on your, your presentation. I did Google or look up the definition of recession as you were asking those questions. I was like, what is the definition of recession? What are the, how do you identify recession? Yeah. And I think you guys hit it right on the, on the mark. I think it is. You look at not only the, the, oh, I lost my train of thought. The employment, the employment rate is one, I think. And then also, the tax revenue or the GDP. But, I mean, this is something that I think we continue to look at. I think this is good information that is brought to the county. We continue to do what's right for the constituents of, of, of Maricopa County. But this is always something fascinating to look at. Even as I get older, I'm starting to look at the market more now than I've ever did before. I never cared. I was like, but now I'm getting older, like retirement, it's like, oh. So, you start thinking of stuff like this. You start looking at stuff, at stuff like this. So, I appreciate the presentation. Always good information. And yeah, look forward to continuing to work to ensure that the county is solvent. I mean, we have, the county has done a great job over the last ten years. You compare ourselves to any county or municipality. I mean, we are, we're pretty sturdy and strong in terms of our economic side. But we always have to be worried about what's going to happen outside and how it impacts us as a county. So, good information.
Just have a few more. So, changes in interest rates. Federal Reserve Board, I used tougher language in some other presentations, but I'm just going to say that they got lucky. Interest rates were kept at zero for too long. They raised them far too fast, caused a lot of problems. But now we have the ability to lower them some. And my best guess is a half a percent before the end of this year. And then they'll have to stay with that if we start to see some of the employment numbers or inflation go up some. So, the employment numbers are weakening, which would justify them lowering rates. Or, yes, to stimulate the economy, and they're watching inflation. But with that delay in inflation coming in compared to the job numbers, they should have the ability to do what I think is right. But they've been six months to nine months behind anybody with an IQ over a hundred over the last, maybe decade. I meant, we're lucky. I wasn't supposed to be that negative. National debt, again, we had way too much borrowing. That trickled through the economy. It wasn't necessarily efficiently spent, to Mr. Guyro's point. The, you have to look at statistics by income category, too, because we always say, don't spend more than thirty-five percent of your income on housing. If you're making less than forty thousand a year, you're spending more than half. If you're making thirty-five or thirty to thirty-five thousand a year, you're spending, I think, in the sixties. So, it's different by income group. And when we went through the COVID recession, if you were making less than, I think, forty thousand a year, you had a twenty-five percent chance of losing your job. If you were making a hundred to a hundred and fifty, you had like a three to five percent chance of losing your job. But with the stimulus money, you ended up making a net profit off of it. And so, a lot really depends on government's ability to help the private sector manage itself, or I don't want to say manage itself, but perform efficiently. Yes. So, what's next? This is just a summary. GDP stats are going to be a little confusing for a little while. The employment numbers are going to fall eventually below the fifty thousand threshold and go negative. And remember to look at this on a multi-month basis, because in any one month, it may show up negative and it could be revised. The massive government cuts or spending after the, followed by the cuts, that's probably enough to help push an already aging expansion into a very mild recession by itself. But when you throw in some of these other things, it could be a little bit worse than normal. But I, as I said in a lot of interviews, I always conclude it with, if I was going to be in one state during the next downturn, it would be Arizona. And I still feel like this is when we can do some good housekeeping. This is when we come up with clever ways of getting some housing built. This is when you look at spending. This is when you tighten your belt a little bit, because government tends to expand a bit when revenues start coming in above projections, and then it has to tighten some. So, this is part of the process. Some additional topics for concern. I verified with Kirsten that I didn't do the hermit crab analogy. And this is one of the most important examples. So, hermit crabs, you have to look up hermit crabs on YouTube and watch a video. Hermit crabs instinctively, they go to the beach and they line up in order of size, because they don't make their own shells. They line up in order of size, and when the big one finds another large shell to climb into, the next largest one climbs into that one, everybody moves up. The question is, what happens if the big one had a two and a half percent mortgage rate? Are they going to move up? No. They're just going to improve their shell, which means the small, lower-income crab at the end is out of luck and ends up, you know, no longer being on the beach. That's what's happening with the way rates are impacting people's interest in moving up, because you can still produce the higher-cost homes, their higher profit margin. But are you going to do it if you have a fantastic mortgage rate? And just for some context, if you had a $500,000 home with a two and a half percent mortgage, it's $1,900 a month payment. If you wanted to move up to a $750,000 home with around a seven percent mortgage, $4,400 a month payment. So, adding fifty percent to your home value adds a hundred and thirty percent more to your payment. Why would you do that? I think interest rates are going to have to come down to below five percent, probably four, four and a half percent, before you're going to see some of that movement among the hermit crabs again. And then we're going to start to free up homes at the lower-income level that the lower-income individuals can afford. And that's a problem just with current inventory issues.
Yeah, Ms. Vice Chair.
Ancillary to that is when, if the interest rate, rates come down, then we refinance our debt. I believe Scott Besant, the Treasury Secretary, had to refinance our debt, and he went short-term with the idea that, once the rates come down, he can, he can reinvest and get a lower rate, because that costs the taxpayers trillions of dollars.
That, that's exactly right. Tariffs, the way tariffs work is it's a tax on the importing business. At first, the, the businesses pay, because you don't want to be the first one to raise your prices. So, you're going to have extra costs go up at the business level, and they're going to say, we have to pass this along to the consumer eventually, but for now, we're going to absorb it. That's delayed the impact of some of the tariffs, and this is why we haven't seen the type of inflation that you would normally expect to see. Eventually, it'll get passed along to the consumer. But we'll have to figure out if there's going to be any business activity that's going to come back to the U.S., because I think people are going to have to believe that this is going to be something that we're going to be doing for a long period of time. There was an article talking about would a corporation whose typical relocation expenses are two to three billion dollars, make that decision if they feel like the tariffs might only be in effect for three and a half more years? I think they have to believe it's going to be in effect much longer. So, the businesses might end up absorbing a little bit more than the economics would suggest. The economics would suggest this immediately goes to the consumer, but it will eventually. We will see higher rates of inflation, and that's why we'll need to see the Federal Reserve Board reductions now. And a concern with inflation, though, is when we saw in the, the Maricopa County area, inflation above ten percent, we knew that prices were high. Now that inflation has fallen to more normal levels, a lot of people are saying, well, prices are back down to normal. No. We went up, and now we just added another two and a half percent to it. So, overall, prices are still fairly high. We actually have to have deflation in order to make this work. And that's something that normally signifies negative issues happening in economics. But we're not in normal times anymore. A lot of the textbooks are going to have to be rewritten, because what's happening right now is getting back to normal, whatever process that is, is the most efficient way of having our economy kind of shore itself up again. CPI, here's the example. Yes, it's growing at the long-term rate right now, but zero percent still means prices haven't come down. I think they came down by around seven percent for gas. They went up a little for housing. But on net, our rate of inflation was very low. So, I had a lot of questions about, if our economy is doing so well, because I'm always very positive about it, how come our inflation rate is so much less than the U.S.? Does that mean that the economy is slowing and you're having problems in, in the Phoenix area or in Arizona? So, picture you're having a race, five people are, five states are racing their way up to the top of a hill. And the Arizona runner ends up getting to the top first. And they beat everybody by five minutes. Well, for five minutes, they have gotten to the top, and now they're walking on flat land. They're not increasing anymore, but they did better than everybody else. The other states are still going up that hill. They're still catching us. Their rates of growth, therefore, are higher than ours, because we got back to normal earlier. When you have states like Arizona that tend to lead in both good and bad economic data, we end up leading the nation in rates of growth early. And then all of a sudden, we slip as other states catch up. That's why I don't like to put the state ranking slides up anymore, because they don't tell the whole story. All of a sudden, some states like Texas and Utah and Arizona are in the twenties. And you see Hawaii and Arkansas and others that typically are in the thirties or forties jump up. Why? Because they were the last racers to get up to the hill and start to stabilize. They're still running upwards, so it looks like they're increasing in altitude when they're not. I don't know if that was a good example or not. I think if I drew a little, some racers on there, it would work. But if you look at the, if you look at the actual curve, the, the green one is us. That started going flat while the rest of the country was still moving up. Medicaid cuts, we've had a lot of questions about. We did an analysis where we had to calculate for each billion dollars and reduce money coming into the state. What would it translate into? And it would translate into a lot of lost economic activity. But it depends on, from my opinion, on how devastating it could be or how, how we can manage it, is going to depend on timing. For something this significant, a shift from the federal government to the states, I think it's got to be beyond just the next election. I think this is something that has to be worked out at least through the end of the decade. And I, and there's already individuals that are thinking about, what's the next step? We kind of identified the overall risk. What are some recommendations that we can make for the state to start to absorb these costs? Because if they don't, you know who's going to end up having some bill sent your way. And so, we want to, we, we're hoping to help the state with making some adjustments, because now there's, on some of the rules, there's discussion about you can postpone certain things up to like 2029 even. I think that we have to push that out further. There's work requirements, and there's other things that I think are valid. But we have to be careful and not, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater on this. We have to be strategic with how we do the Medicaid cuts, because if we're strategic and the dollar amount isn't as severe, and we're given enough time to make adjustments, we can manage. And the economy will be stronger for it. Our workforce will be stronger for it. We may go through a period where there's a lot of individuals that are going to have to receive some very low-cost training when they're going to have to start working. But there's ways to do that, because the savings from training those individuals is greater than the cost of training those individuals. So, that's a positive ROI project, and it'll pay for itself. The state budget, we'll still can.
Chairman, I can ask you super quick, have, are you taking a harder look, from your perspective, at our safety net hospitals, both rural and here in the valley, in terms of the Medicaid reconfiguration and reductions over the next ten years? How that will impact them? I just was curious if you were working on that as well.
So, our initial, Mr. Chairman remembers, when, our, our initial work was to identify increments that some other organizations identified. And then we said, we don't know if they're right or not. Let's do it for a billion doll, each billion dollars. Because some said it's going to be seven billion, some said it was going to be fifteen billion. So, we do it for each billion. And we broke it down by county, and we broke it down by congressional district. And my biggest concern is the rural parts of the state, where it's already a challenge to provide medical care to certain areas. But there's things that we could have been doing that we haven't been doing. For example, if we have broadband in enough places, we can do a lot of remote doctor appointments. But we also need to have the surgeons and other advanced physicians, because you have to do some in-person. Well, Arizona is a great place to retire, and rural Arizona is a fantastic place that we're not even promoting enough. So, I think we should be promoting that more as part of our tourism activity. But I would love to see those, the, the more specialized physicians maybe retire in a Prescott or Prescott Valley, and them say, I don't want to fully retire like everybody else. I'd like to work two days a week. I'm going to open up a practice with three of my colleagues that we all moved here at the same time, or I, I met them when I came out to visit. They say they don't do that, because they can't afford the medical malpractice insurance. And I, I, I'm honestly, I brought this up in an economic meeting once, in a meeting with economic developers, and got a lot of funny looks. And before I walked around the corner to the elevator, I heard somebody say, I can't believe round said economic development has to include malpractice insurance. Well, this was from talking to physicians, them saying why they don't want to continue to do it. Why don't we have a $10 million fund at the state that receives the appropriation, but the money's still banked under the general fund in a separate account, so it doesn't count as an, as an expense? And that's used to reduce the risk on some of these rural physicians that we need in some of these areas. How much is that going to cost us? Probably nothing, once again. But if you come up with something clever and innovative, it's very difficult, because as a consultant, I can bring up issues all the time, and all I can lose is a client. But a lot of the people that work for government agencies can lose their jobs, and they have to be very careful with what they want to support. We have to give everybody enough information so that they can support it. And it's the same with lawmakers, because some policy issues are economic. It's not whether you're Republican or Democrat. But if you're, if it seems like a, a, a party-type topic, you have to make sure that that lawmaker has enough info. has enough info so that they can talk to their colleagues and say, "This is why I'm supporting it." And then they get more people signing on to the bill. So I feel like people have to support the lawmakers because they can't be an expert in all these things, but we have to have enough people that are willing to go and bang their fists on podiums and say, "We have to do more." And I'm seeing that less than I did a decade ago and even less than I saw, you know, two or three decades ago when I started at the Capitol and I thought it was just so fascinating how fired up people got. I don't see that anymore, I'm the grumpy one now. Anyways, yes. So we'll have to look at the state budget issues. They'll go out multiple years, we'll have to figure out. This is going to be a challenge because it's hard enough just to identify if we're going to have, when a recession might occur, but what does a mild recession look like compared to a severe recession? And I think I have that, I'm not sure. Let me cover this one first. So we were also hearing how our job growth has dropped, so the inflation was less in the state because of that, we hit the top of the mountain first. It's been the same thing with job growth, so we fell. So soft landing for the economy. I don't have the slide, but for the state to get through a mild recession, they need, they would have needed about a billion dollars, but with the extra spending that was added over the last couple or three years, the extra half a billion that some of us worked very hard for two, three years ago to get put into the rainy day fund now is fully needed to cover a mild recession. So the full billion and a half, the half a billion that was supposed to be used on continuing economic development now needs to be used to balance the budget. So a mild recession, billion and a half, the rainy day fund will cover it. If it's worse than a mild recession, then more severe action will have to take place. In terms of your forecast, this was the last one that you saw, just some context on state shared sales, on the difference between most likely and pessimistic, it's not all that much, but when you go into a recession, that's where it drops off. And that's why it's so challenging because when you start, it's almost impossible to say, "In our budget, we're going to forecast a recession," because if you don't have it, then you made a lot of significant cuts that you didn't need to make. And so it's one of those things where can we figure out a way of accommodating a recession if it occurs? Because you can budget conservatively, but can you make that next jump from a conservative forecast to a recession forecast? And you know how you do that? You get rid of a lot of your debt, you end up setting yourself up because then you can borrow again later, you end up setting yourself up where you don't have as much pension debt. There's, all the things that the county has done in order to get to the current position gives you flexibility. The key when the economy changes is to have flexibility. If you don't have flexibility and you don't have choices, then you're having to make public policy decisions that you would not like to impose on your constituents.
Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you for that. You know, I remember, you know, in Chandler, we had a contingency fund, we had a rainy day fund. Jen, do we have that option here at the county and do we know what that is? And what would be the forecast if this mild recession or a moderate recession comes through so that we can, because so much of our business is statutorily required, right? I don't know if everybody at the legislature knows that when they're budgeting, but maybe you could address that for me, thanks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Supervisor. We do have a significant contingency fund in place to manage any downturns, and as Mr. Rounds said, we have paid off the majority of our pension debt and don't carry any general obligation debt, so we're in incredibly good position to weather a downturn. And we've also have started to create that contingency because of the public safety funding, which is going to be on the ballot in next year. So we are anticipating how to move forward with our budget next year ahead of that ballot measure. So that's why we've also been very conservative in our budgeting and make sure we have a lot of money in our piggy bank so we can maintain our mandated services.
And the jail tax was highlighted because there still has to be a vote on that, but you made very strong arguments in terms of the public policy component. Your team did a great job at the Capitol.
I just want to point out, I like to compare us to other counties around the country, other large counties. Several of them I've described as financial basket cases. That would include Cook County and LA County in California, Cook County's in Illinois. But I don't know if you saw, but what's been playing out last week is Harris County in Texas, which I consider for us to be a competitor because it's a similarly situated state, similarly situated county. Houston is located in Harris County, and the equivalent of their Board of Supervisors, also a five-member body, have been fighting each other like cats and dogs. They have run up a $200 million deficit. The chairman of the board is now trying to delay or to block and obstruct pay raises for constables and for other law enforcement officials, and I think it's just really a good testament to our budget team and to the county manager, but also to this board and previous boards that we have a really good record here at Maricopa County of fiscal responsibility, of applying what I would call with a small C conservative principles to budgeting. And even if you're in a thriving, red-hot, red state like Texas, you can still have large counties that are now almost collapsing within itself because of economic infighting. And these are Republicans and Democrats choosing sides, it's not even a partisan battle right now, but it's getting really ugly in Harris County. But here, we work well together on a bipartisan fashion, and I think we are a national model because as the county manager pointed out earlier, we're paying down pension debt and we have no general obligation debt. And it's frankly something I think that should merit more attention because we're very proud of the record that we're doing. Unfortunately, if it bleeds, it leads, that's when it gets on the news, but the good news here is that businesses should take note of the difference between Maricopa County and Harris County in Texas.
Mr. Chairman, I completely agree. On my longer presentation, this, I always have a slide that shows the things that matter in growing an economy, and balanced budget has been one of the bullet point items in there, and that means, you know, state, county, local government. It's important to have a balanced budget so that you can make pivots as you go through a business cycle, which is going to continue to exist. We're not going to go through a period where there's no more business cycles. And I would say, working with the county, I can't remember a time where the internal politics was interfering with any forecasting or the budget numbers. It's always been very solid. There's been outside issues, but not internally. And that's why we've enjoyed the project so much because it's been about working with staff, doing the math, brainstorming with Jen about some policy topics like the impact of the air quality issue, or, you know, attending some of your housing affordability meetings and getting some context on what's happening there. Working with Mr. Gallardo on Cartwright, and, you know, talk about, that's a great example again of how you can have influence on an area because that's where- That's right. So you have a great opportunity to have an impact beyond just balancing the budget and continuing good practices. You'll have some challenges during the downturn, but I think this is a fantastic board.
Thank you. You're still on the Christmas card list.
Any final questions or did we cover them all already?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Of course.
Good luck out there. Great as always. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number two, request for cash deficit school district levy. Who's going to come up and talk to us about this to start? Don't be shy. County manager, have any idea?
Mr. Chairman, Diana is here from the school superintendent's office, and I think she can go over what this item is, what, and the work that her office has done to prepare these levies.
Good morning and welcome. Please introduce yourself for those sitting here and those watching online.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Diana Zalitchenin, Chief Deputy School Superintendent, under the leadership of Superintendent Shelley Box.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, thank you for having me. So on this item, we are bringing forward, every year, school districts basically send the county school superintendent's office their budget. We serve as the middle person between the school districts and the Board of Supervisors. So we certify their budgets, their like tax levies, and we serve as the expert where we bring it forward to you in this manner and where you would either adopt or approve this, this item. So I'm here to answer any questions. This is something that's done every single year, and once you adopt, that gives the green light to the treasurer's office to do their tax rolls and send out to property, to appropriate school district, people who live in that school district, I apologize.
Okay, so we're under agenda item number two. Is there a specific school district that you believe that we should have under discussion or that you wanted us to discuss and deliberate over?
So it was brought to my attention last Friday by ATRA, which is the Arizona Tax Research Association, that there could be a mistake in regards with the Nadaberg's tax levy. One of my employees, whose last day, it was last Friday unfortunately, who was phenomenal, but he was an expert in this matter and he completed all of these property tax levies and has suggested that we include the Nadaberg's tax levy. However, last Friday, ATRA has come to us and raised this red flag, so we have not had enough time to look fully into this matter. However, our advice is to move forward and adopt this to ensure that we are in statutory compliance because it has to happen by the third Monday of August, which is today, and we give you, we assure you that we will look into this matter and bring it forward for correction if ATRA ends up being correct in this matter.
Okay, so can you please walk us through what ATRA's concerns are or what they've discovered? Because you said you learned about this on Friday, haven't enough had time to analyze it, but a vote must take place. I assume you would think if there's other concerns or issues, you would want then to come back for a subsequent vote for an amendment? Is that what you're proposing? If you can just kind of walk us through the facts of this and what you're asking, what you're hoping the board will do, because then we're going to have to deliberate here.
I completely understand, Mr. Chairman. So due to the statutory necessity to vote on this and adopt this today, we do suggest that you adopt it today so that we can come back to it if there's an error. As of right now, I can, I cannot confirm that there's an error, however, when somebody such as ATRA comes forward to us and says, "Hey, we noticed this error," we take that very seriously and we want to ensure that we are doing right by every school district. I'm meeting with them, with Jennifer Stilo and Kevin McCarthy this afternoon. Again, I apologize, we genuinely did not have enough time to sit down and look into this matter further. However, this is our absolute priority and this meeting will take place today.
Okay, and then one more question.
Absolutely.
If the board doesn't approve this proposed tax levy, what do you think are the effects or consequences?
Well, the first one that's the biggest concern to me is that we will not be in compliance with the statute, and then also it could have a, an effect on the school district where they're not able to continue with their daily operations. However, if we do come forward, if you do adopt today, we can get to the bottom of this, come back to you, brief all of you, and ensure that we're all on the same page. And for us to be incorrect, because that's in, we want to serve, serve our constituents well and we don't want anybody to overpay, but we also want to make sure that the school districts are getting enough from the property tax in the districts that they serve. So my concern is that if we do not approve this today, that, I would need some legal advice in this matter. We genuinely did not have the time, so I-
I was going to get to that.
Yes, I need like a legal advice on this matter, but from what I know is that we could, we can, there's a provision in Title 42 that allows us to come back to you and ask for a revision, so we could come back on September 10th and provide a formal briefing again and tell you like where the error was, how we're going to fix it moving forward, and to ask you to adopt the new correction.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to check in and see if members of the board have any questions or comments, but my final question is, is there anyone here from the county attorney's office to speak to these issues?
I believe that there's one gentleman here, right?
Mr. Chairman, the attorney that advises county budget and finances here.
Mr. Van Cleve, good to see you. I'm just going to have you take a seat, but you don't have to speak right now. And then when you do speak, please introduce yourself to anyone watching and listening. Any questions or comments? Mr. Stewart and then Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. So I just want to get some clarification in sort of general terms, there, is it possible error in the levy rate? Or maybe it's high, maybe it's low? Is it, is it too high? Is that what ATRA is concerned about? Is that the levy rate's too high? Or that-
From what I understand, they believe that the $170,000 that Nadaberg School District is asking for should not even be included, from what I understand. However, we have not had a meeting, so I really do have to talk to them to get to the bottom of this.
And the school board, the Nadaberg School Board came forward with this levy, and they've asked for this, this money, and ATRA is concerned about that?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, so if we approve this, then they can take that to levy, and statutorily, we need to do that today. If they are in error and they find through legal advice or whatever that they've made a mistake, that can be amended at a later date, but this keeps the train moving forward to ensure that the school district stays funded at this $170,000 that they're, that the school board is asking for? Is that, am I explaining it? I'm trying to understand it. Is that, is that right?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, they're asking for this $170,000 to be collected.
Right.
So if there's an error, nothing will fully like happen like right now from what I'm understanding. What will happen is that whether, for example, if you adopt today, then if we fix it at the September 10th meeting, if ATRA is correct, because they, we don't know if they are 100% correct as of right now, we will look into that, and then if we fix it at the September 10th meeting, then we'll, that will give the green light to treasurer's office to just fix their tax rule so that they know how much exactly to tax those houses in Nadaberg School District.
Okay, so your recommendation to us is to approve this, one, to meet statutory requirements, two, it can be a fix and amended later if we need to, but if we were to disapprove today, that could kind of blow the whole thing up? Or would that cause some heartache? Like, I don't want to usurp the school board, they're an elected body, but I also want to be mindful of our budgetary responsibilities to oversee this. What's your recommendation?
I apologize, this is where I would need the legal advice to just know all of the aspects of that. I'm, I'm not an attorney, but-
Thank you, Chair.
But one quick comment, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart. I believe that this has happened in the past, correct? And there was a concern like this in the past that it was corrected and everything was fine?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my understanding was when Supervisor, oh sorry, County School Superintendent Watson was here, this did happen and I believe the board did an amendment.
Same analogous situation?
I believe so. We don't recall the specifics, but there was an amendment.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair, and then when she's done, Mr. Gallardo will have one question.
I'll yield to Mr. Gallardo.
Steve.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just, because I'm looking, I haven't looked up 4217- I haven't looked up 421752, but under the 15991, it does state in statute that this has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors on the third Monday, correct me if I'm wrong, of August, that's today. Why, why, why isn't this brought to us a little bit sooner than on the final day where we have really no other option?
My apologies, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, this was brought to our attention at the county school superintendent's office afternoon, last Friday afternoon. So we have not had the time to look into this matter fully, and it's Monday morning, but this is something that's a priority for us this week.
No, I'm sorry, maybe, and that's something, maybe we talked to the chairman and the county manager in terms of, I mean, statute says the third Monday of August, which is today, that the Board of Supervisors would, would have to approve it. Why wasn't this brought two weeks ago, three weeks ago for us to have this type of discussion and being, being having to make a formal vote on something? Do you get what I'm saying? It's not so much the mistake, the fact, the logistic-
Mr. Chairman.
Maybe that's, maybe that's something that we can talk about later.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, are you, just to make sure that I understand you correctly, are you- you correctly, are you saying that, why didn't we bring this item sooner?
Yeah. Not in just the entire, because, and I'm glancing, this is my first time reading this, by the way, okay? So, so bear with me. If I'm reading it wrong, let me know. But Fifteen-Nine-Ninety-One says that the County School Superintendent will bring to the Board of Supervisors for approval, the new tax, or these tax levy, no later than the third Monday of August, which is today.
Correct.
Why? I would have liked to have voted on this two weeks ago, or three weeks ago.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, I completely understand. I do not have a better response for you right now.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine.
It is our first time in this office as well.
Yeah, no, no, I'm fine. I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize you.
No, no, not at all. Please, like, we, I welcome it, because we want to be better at this. So, if this is something, I will work with Jen Pokorski to see if we can bring that, and my team for us to do better next year. However, this is a situation that we are in this year, and I'm hoping to do the best that we can with what we're working right now.
That's fine. I, I appreciate that. And Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, so I have a better understanding, because I started on a school board, but this is, this is superintendent and finance type stuff. They submit their, their reports to you all. Is there a, the statute talks about a commission. Who, do you just take it face value? Or is there some type of oversight that reviews them all, or we just wait for ATRA to weigh in or have their look at it?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo. So, as I mentioned before, we do serve as the middleman where we certify these tax levy reports. So, this is where we also look at the Assessor's Office and get the property values from them. And there's a lot of math involved, unfortunately.
Okay. No, that's fine. You don't have to get into that.
My CFO has-
But, but you all do look at it. You all, you just don't take it face value. You do look at it-
Absolutely. No, we, we confirm every number.
And, and the report you have, or the, the, the evaluation that the Office has done, has, you believe that Nadaburg, and I'm not even sure where Nadaburg's at, but Nadaburg's numbers are correct.
It's in Maricopa County.
It's somewhere. It's one of your, one of your guys' district, ain't mine. Is it mine?
Yeah.
Is it? No.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, it is in Supervisor Lesko's district. It is Whitman.
Oh, okay. But, but you have certified that the numbers that Nadaburg has, has presented are correct in accordance with whatever the Assessor's Office?
Correct. And Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, from my understanding, from what ATRA said in the email, it's not necessarily that the number is incorrect. It's just that it should not even be part of this tax levy. It's just not according to the statute. However, I do not have all of the details. Again, my, please accept my apologies.
No, no.
I will be speaking with both Kevin and Jennifer this afternoon. We've already agreed on that. It's just, I don't know how long the meeting will go, but that's the priority for today.
And Mr., thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I am, I'm, whatever your preference is, Mr. Chairman, I'm good with.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna go to the county manager to comment on anything that was brought up in that discussion, and then Madam Vice-Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, just got some notes from our Budget and Finance folks. So, in July, you approved three cash deficit levies for school districts. Nadaburg, my understanding, is missed the deadline. So, then they submitted theirs later, which is why it is on this agenda. They, so they did not ask for their cash deficit levy prior to the deadline. So, then I believe they asked for it, went to the School Superintendent, and then it's on this agenda. This is the last time that it can be done, because per statute, it has to be approved prior to us approving our levy. And I don't, if there's any comments from legal on that, but that, that is why it's on today as a last minute.
Appreciate it. Go ahead.
So, first of all, Ms. Lotigan, thank you, and Superintendent Boggs for your conservative, presenting your credentials so conservatively. I, I had a conversation with ATRA as well, particularly after learning that Supervisor Lesko would not be here today. So, I took it upon myself. The history I have is this. In 2016, there was a bill that passed that ATRA supported, and Chuck Essex from the school community supported, to allow school districts to keep their excess cash. The arrangements prior was that charter schools could keep excess cash. School districts could not, that it got swept and reduced the levy. So, the idea was that whole practice would go away. They got to keep their excess cash. But the agreement on the other side is, they didn't get to levy anymore for cash deficits, which are kind of an ephemeral cash position at any point in time, as a school district is, you know, throw, throw a dart at a dartboard. So, but school districts interpreted it, or had been interpreting it, that they get to keep their excess cash and not reduce levies, but they also get to levy for any cash deficits, which is not believed to be an accurate interpretation of the law, according to ATRA. I will admit to being a little chagrined. We approved, well, there are other schools on this list, which is the, what's the name of that commission? PTOC? Primary Tax Oversight Commission, which is a statutory commission, which has been in operation for decades. And they review this, these levies or assessments in relationship to a current statute. And they have identified several schools. There are a couple that slipped through last year here in Maricopa County. Saddle Mountain went through, one point four million. Arlington, fifty-four thousand. Scottsdale went through at five point seven million, under this practice. But the belief is that these school districts, and now we're up to Nadaburg, do not qualify, because the only way to assess is if there is a deviation, now, under the new law, if there's a deviation in property tax rolls, but they can't levy for non-property tax cash shortfalls. And that's, that, so, so the question is, to your point, yes, I want to follow statute, because that's what we do. My quandary is, that ain't statute, at least the way I understand it. If we have the opportunity to go back and look at the schools, the school districts that have been identified on this Primary Tax Oversight Commission that we've approved otherwise for this year, and look at recapturing some of those revenues back for our taxpayers, I am hoping that's something, and believing that's something Superintendent Boggs would support. Again, with the solid conservative credentials she brings to her position. So, a couple of questions about process. Was this actually approved by the Nadaburg School Board? I know the Superintendent liked the idea. But one of the things I've discovered over the years is that school boards, a lot of times, aren't in that loop. So, I would recommend that all these school districts that have reached out for this dollar amount, you probably need to go back and check, not telling you how to do it, but check and make sure that their elected officials have signed off on this. Then, secondly, has Superintendent Boggs, I know she's just been in office a few months, has she been able to seek a legal opinion on this practice, or is that underway? I mean, I don't need to know what the contents of the legal opinion are, but does she have one that supports what the recommendation is here today?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor McGee, again, we, we were just notified about this on Friday. As soon as we found out, we worked with appropriate parties who were available at that point in time. I'm talking about four thirty PM on a Friday. Unfortunately, you know, well-
Yep. I totally get it.
People work till five, so it's not unfortunately, you know, they have the right to get off work. But it was just too late in the day for us-
Understood.
-to get some legal advice. But genuinely, this is an absolute priority for us this week, and we will definitely seek legal advice. And we are already speaking with one. There was just not enough time to get a proper legal advice. So, I don't want to say something wrong.
Respectfully, I so totally get it. I suspected that, because the issue hadn't arisen, why look for a legal, why look for trouble, right? But the legal advice our Budget and Finance people are getting from the county attorney is different. It pertains to our role in this process. So, I'm, I'm assuming you'll share that with us, that it's more ministerial?
Chairman, Supervisors, that's correct. At this point, it's my understanding that the school district has certified the amount of the levy, and that the County School Superintendent is recommending that the Board go ahead and approve the levy. And I don't want to go into providing legal advice in an open meeting, but I think that you're, you're correct. The issue here is really whether this levy is resulting from an anticipated or actual deviation in the property tax rule. And my understanding is, is that the agenda for today in the informal meeting is kind of built on the approval of these things happening by approving these levies, and then ultimately, the resolution, I believe, in Item Four. So, I think with the compliance with the statute, I would hate for the, the deadline to be missed. And as was stated, they're looking into, and we're looking into, whether or not this can in any way be tied to an anticipated or actual deviation in the property tax rule, and whether or not it needs to be corrected at a later meeting. But in the meantime, it seems like, given the deadlines that exist for the Board, that, well, I think that what they put forward complies with the statute.
And thank you very much, because there is a differentiation in the advice we would get versus the advice you would get, because our roles are different. I would be willing to move this forward with the caveat that we work with this commission on property, Primary Tax Oversight Commission, to look at all the districts that may or may not qualify with what the current reading of the statute now is. Is, is it possible to shape a motion to that effect? And then that way, if in fact, their, Nadaburg does in some way, shape, or form qualify, and we just don't have the information, then they are not foreclosed from that. But I think going forward, we need to, based on what ATRA has told me, we need to correct the practice. Is that something the Superintendent would be interested in working with us on?
Chairman Galvin, Supervisor Brophy McGee, absolutely. We care about doing everything by the book, and that taxpayers are now charged more than they need to be. And this is something that's very near and dear to our heart. So, it's an absolute priority for us. So, we are hoping that you will adopt this today. And then I assure you that our office will work diligently with appropriate parties, such as ATRA, Auditor General, AD, Treasurer's Office, assessors, to ensure that all of the numbers that we are looking at are, in fact, correct, and that if there's a error in the process, or something better that we can do, that we do so. And I'm more than happy to commit to briefing all of you, like separately, to ensure that we're all on the same page, that if you have any advice for us, or suggestions on how to make it even better, that we do that.
Thank you. And I have-
My pleasure.
I have absolute confidence in you and Superintendent Boggs to do that. So, then my question is, can we sequester these funds and the funds approved on prior agendas while we go back and reconsider the scope of the issue? It does not involve Number Three. I know that Number Three is involved, but Number Two results in a levy that equals any separately stated cash deficit from the prior fiscal year, resulting from an anticipated or actual deviation in the property tax role. That's what we got to fix. Would we be able, Madam County Manager, to, to consider some of the other school districts that we have approved, to make sure we align the practice with actual following of state law?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice-Chair, our staff will work closely with the County School Superintendent to make sure that all of the cash deficit levies that have been approved this year are reviewed. And I think that was your question, if I'm understanding correctly, to make sure that they were done in accordance with statute.
And to that effect, those school districts that maybe shouldn't have been approved, because it's not a property tax role deviation, would then be coming back to the Board for further review, even with prior approval? That's where I'm confused.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice-Chair, my understanding, and, and conversations also with MCAO, that if there is something that was recommended to the Board through the school districts and the County School Superintendent's Office that should not have been approved, there is a process in place for that to be amended, so that there is no impact to the taxpayer.
And bottom line, I want us to follow statute, period. So, I think there is some question as to what statute is. Based on my civilian's reading of it, I think it's pretty clear, but I'd like to be certain. So, I would, I would be happy to put a motion forward, keep Nadaburg moving along with the idea that none of our rights, or none of taxpayer rights are not abridged going forward until we make a final determination? Does that work?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice-Chair, I would defer as to the Board's attorney as to the form of the motion, but I can assure you that we will work closely with the School Superintendent's Office to make any corrections, so taxpayers are not harmed.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, the Board has the authority to approve items, and there's also a process, as the county manager stated, to ratify items and also to amend items in the future. So, the recommendation would be to make a motion to approve this item with the awareness, potentially, that it will be reviewed at a future meeting, potentially, I heard the September tenth meeting stated. And that either way, whether it is correct or not, the Board will receive a briefing on that item then, so that the Board can take appropriate action then. But, but for today's item, a motion to approve or deny with an awareness that it will also be reviewed at the September tenth meeting.
And thank you. Mr. Chairman, County Manager Brooke, if I may ask, what about prior approvals without, like, the ones I, I listed in there, maybe, maybe more Saddle Mountain, Arlington, Scottsdale? How would those come back if they've already been approved?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Brophy McGee, at the Board's discretion, those could also be added to a review on the September tenth agenda.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I wrote down the names that ATRA has brought to your attention of the school districts. I'm more than happy to add that, those to the list for me to discuss with ATRA today, to see what they saw, and for us to confirm. And then, if there is an error, and if even a single taxpayer has been hurt in the process financially, I'm confident Superintendent Boggs will urge this Board to correct this. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I really super appreciate it. What I'm looking for now are the mechanics of a motion, for instance, having voted in the affirmative on the approval of these prior levies, you know, how do we bring them back? Nadaburg is provisional. So, Nadaburg is provisional. It's a provisional approval, subject to final review on September tenth. Any other school districts where it, levies had been approved for something other than a deviation of the property tax rules, whatever it says in the statute, would also be brought back for final review on September tenth. Would the funds then be sequestered until that point? That's a-
Chairman-
Treasurer or assessor question?
Our office would notify the Treasurer's Office to ensure of the, that we are all on the same page, so that it can be fixed.
I'm not sure if it would be sequestered, or if there would be some sort of true-up if the Board voted differently since September tenth.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding would be a true-up for their overall levy.
Right. If the Board acted differently that day.
If the Board, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And we would follow a process to amend it, bring it onto the Board's agenda item. I defer to Wes on if we could provisionally approve it. My understanding from the re- My understanding from the read of the statute, which is 15992, I believe, G, is it G10? It is upon approval. The language says approval. It does not say conditional approval, but I'll defer to Wes. So my recommendation from a staff perspective is, would be approved and then amended at a later date.
We could approve the levy as proposed, but on a future date, we can always change it.
Correct.
And when we change it, we can true up to the taxpayer.
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, just to add, item number two is specific to the Nadaburg School District. So I agree with that analysis that the motion today would be to amend or approve with just an explanation of a vote potentially that it will be looked at again.
But we don't have to include the other three today because we could always amend it at a future date.
Correct.
Is that your understanding, Jennifer?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay. Madam Vice Chair, does that sound acceptable?
I think so.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Van Cleve. So this notion, this terminology, deviation from the property tax rules, one, can you please explain what that is? And then, two, who makes that determination? And three, what would be the remedy if it, in fact, was not a deviation from the property tax rule? So that's a three-part compound question for you.
And again, I failed to introduce myself, I think, when I spoke earlier. My name is Wes Van Cleve. I work for the Maricopa County's Attorney's Office. I will try, you know, again, having just received this late on Friday, there is no case law that's developed around this statute that really defines what a deviation, actual or anticipated in the property tax rule even means. But I would suspect, as I understand it in the limited time I've reviewed this, that my understanding is that there is a shortfall of the 169 some odd thousand dollars, and I'm assuming, and it's bad to assume, but that this school district is suggesting that that is because they did not produce enough in the way of property taxes to meet some budget requirement that they had. I think a lot of this will be probably fleshed out with whatever information comes forward from the review and the further meetings that occur as to how they came up with the number and what was the basis that supports it and whether it even falls within this category of a problem with the tax rules versus some other issue. I wish I could add more. A deviation, I think, would just, again, mean that they collected less in the way of property taxes to support the school's budget than they thought they would. Unfortunately, it's about all I have at this point, given the amount of time I've had to look at it.
Okay, so it would be a different story of, let's say, the property tax collection matched what was forecasted, but the school district ended up spending more than what was anticipated. That would be an issue for them, correct?
Chairman, correct. I think that's a big issue here, is what is this deficit a result of? Do they exceed their budget in some way, and that's why they have this shortfall? Did they just not collect enough in property taxes, and that's why they have it? So I think a lot of this information should come to light, hopefully, in fairly short order and certainly in time for the board to take a look at it at the next meeting.
Okay. And the fact that this information is now being thrust upon the board on literally the day of the deadline, we still have an opportunity that if we do determine that, for whatever reason, the school district spend more than they should have, that we can go back on a future date, including September 10th, and make changes that we see fit.
Chairman, Supervisors, that is my understanding, is that your approval today, and I think it's correct, the statute doesn't say about provisional approvals, but an approval with some caveat in there that this will be brought back at the September meeting for further review would probably suffice.
Okay, thank you. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I think I have a motion. You two really need to pay attention, and you, Diana.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stewart, do you have a question?
No, you were asking me if I wanted to speak. I'll speak after.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, please proceed.
Let's see if this works. So I move approval of agenda item number two, request for cash deficit school district levy for Nadaburg schools. I further move this and other similar levies approved prior to today's vote be brought back for final review and approval by September 10th of the next meeting.
Mr. Chair members of the board, because the item two is about Nadaburg specifically, my recommendation is I move approval of Nadaburg School District, explain votes that this will be subject to further approval, further review at a further meeting. I'm not sure, because this is not a statutory hearing, I don't believe that you have to specify which meeting it will be reviewed at.
Okay.
But I think saying at a future meeting is sufficient. And then just to be careful with the motion, because this is noticed as to one school district only, hesitant to also include language in the motion for other school districts that were previously approved that are not agendized on this exact agenda.
You shouldn't be surprised that I disagree. First of all, I would like a date certain. I would like a date certain. It's just sometime in the future. And I would like to indicate that the board is interested in looking at all the prior ones that we approved under the same premise. How do we do that?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I think if that's the direction the board would like to go, I think then it is appropriate to, as you stated, motion to approve item number two as to Nadaburg School District, understanding that this and the potential other school districts be looked at at a future meeting, not later than the end of September, maybe.
Or before.
Yeah.
September 10th?
Yes.
How does that sound, Mr. Chair?
Or the end of September to give you a little more time.
My only question for the vice chair is, are you just going to name this one particular school district in the actual language of the motion?
Not when I get to "I further move," my favorite phrase.
Because only because one school district was noticed for today.
Yeah, and so that's being addressed, and I further move that that school district, as well as others, will be brought back. Do you want September 30th or 10th?
10th. I mean, I have no concern about the date. I'm just wondering if making reference to other districts is-
But, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I mean, if ATRA is flat wrong and just, I mean, why would we need even readdress this in September? Move forward.
Well, it's conditional if we bring it back.
If we, oh, I think if we use that word-
Conditionally?
Yeah, I think that would be good. I mean-
But I think we just, my concern is just noticing for this one school district, not the three other school districts that were not noticed for today, because we already have been established today that we can always go back and look at those previous school districts.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm voting yes on this, so I can do that. Otherwise, I'd just vote no.
Right, yeah. Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Chair, yeah, I think there's a motion on the floor that I do want to address. I'm not familiar with-
It's not there yet.
There's a conversation about ATRA. I'm not privy to that conversation that you guys or you may have had with them, so I'd like a deeper understanding of what their ask is before we take this to a motion. I'd ask the vice chair to rescind her motion amendment, let us pass this number two. What I would recommend, though, because I do want to know more, and I do want us to be statutorily aligned, is that we maybe make a separate motion at the end of the meeting as a board to execute against what you're asking for, because I would like to know more about the school districts that we're concerned about. So is that, is that a possibility for us? Yes, sir.
Mr. Stewart, we can only do motions to items that are on the agenda, but I think what Mr. McGee is trying to do is addressing that, but go ahead, please.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, while this, while Nadaburg School District is currently on the item number two, I know the superintendent that I work for, so I'm more than comfortable committing publicly that we will look into the Saddle Mountain, Arlington, and Scottsdale and see with ATRA where their red flags are, for us to look into those. And then again, as Supervisor Gallardo has said, ATRA could be wrong. While they are a respected association, not saying anything negative, we will look into their concerns, address them, and we can follow up with either like a briefing to your office where we show up for a meeting and tell you about it, or we can send you an email, however you prefer. But we will look into these additional three, just so that you have the peace of mind, and then also if somebody is raising a red flag, we want to look at those things always so to ensure that taxpayers everywhere across Arizona are protected.
And to that point, ATRA is not here. ATRA has not testified, so we're going based on what you, as a representative of the superintendent's office, relayed to us regarding ATRA.
Correct, which is one email.
Yeah, your request to the board is to approve this item, but Supervisor Brophy McGee has done a really good job of boiling down what the issues are and is working on language, but your ask on behalf of the superintendent is that we approve this today with full knowledge that we're going to review this again on September 10th.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Madam Vice Chair?
And to that point, it wouldn't be just an email or a follow-up. It would be the subject of a board meeting agenda, correct? If that's suitable.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, yes, either could be an informational item or it could be on there for, depending on what the results are, or it could be on there as an amendment for a vote.
Yeah, information possible action. Well, I appreciate your public comments and commitment. I have faith in you. I will introduce the motion of approval of agenda item as per Mr. Stewart's request. Agenda item number two, request for deficit school district levy as it has been presented for Nadaburg only.
Second.
And, Mr. Chairman, I request a roll call vote.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more question for the vice chair. Did you want to put a date on that for the return?
Mr. Chair, I heard Mr. Stewart saying he didn't want a date or he didn't want additional, he wanted it approved as it is agendized. Was I mistaken?
Mr. Chair, there's a second on the floor. Are we moving to a vote or are we going to discussion?
It's a clarification.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure I'm just clear on the, on the motion, but I think I am because the vice chair just made the motion, so, okay. So where are we in that? We have a second. Okay, let's go a roll call vote.
Thank you. Chairman Supervisor Stewart?
Yes.
Supervisor Brophy McGee?
Pass.
Supervisor Lesko is absent today. Supervisor Gallardo?
Yes.
Chairman Galvin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
My whole purpose for this item is to get to the root cause of the problem. The motion that I introduced at the request of my colleague from District One did not suit my means, and I respectfully must vote no. It is my understanding that there will be further information and a potential for action coming forward, and I will work with your office and Superintendent Boggs' office in any way that I can, but my vote is no.
Okay. Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just to be clear, thank you for the explanation. I appreciate everybody's input, and as Vice Chair had referenced me in her comments, I understand that this is $178,000 the school district needs to have in their budget and that our voting no would essentially hold that up and prevent them from moving forward with a lot of things that they need to accomplish. I really appreciate Vice Chair's addressing this. Unfortunately, I was not privy to the conversation that she had with an outside group, ATRA, about the concerns that they had. And during this presentation, it's really challenging for us to get to the root of those issues, but those are concerns that I have as well. If we're faltering in our oversight of that school district's budget, we certainly need to be aware of that. So I appreciate your commitment to letting us know what's going to happen by the September 10th, and I feel comfortable moving forward with this vote. And then if we need to pull the string back a little bit, we can certainly do that in a month from now, or less than a month. So thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, thank you. My comments are, it's just extremely frustrating when things are thrust upon the board on the final minute, on the day of, and we're told this is a deadline and you have to vote for it. And this has happened to the board on separate occasions on different items. So I think the vice chair, Supervisor Brophy McGee, did a really good job of drilling down into the essence of the question. It's not just this school district, but other school districts. But it's really hard when the story relayed to us is a Friday phone call at 4:30 and who we are on a Monday at 9:30, and we're being told you have to vote for it because statutory language is cited. However, what I think is really important is that the board has the discretion at any point can come back tomorrow, frankly, and change its mind on these tax levies. The other thing that I know is really key is that this board doesn't want to raise taxes unnecessarily on taxpayers. And so we're going to go through this with a fine-tooth comb, whether it's tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, September 10th or September 30th, because this is an issue that has arisen, frankly, out of the blue, and I think the board is just not happy about that, but the board will do everything it can to take a look at it. So no matter what language of the motion came out today, there's a strong indication from the vice chair that is chaired by the other members of the board, is to make sure that these school districts are not spending money willy-nilly, not going into deficits for no good reasons, but they need to justify why there's a deficit. And if they're going to show that property tax revenue collections are coming in shorter, okay, but they had a whole year to see that happening and unfolding. And so I also want to see why they're spending the money as they are, and I think the vice chair did a terrific job of really getting to the essence of that question. Thank you. Okay, moving on to number three. Request for judgment and resolution, school district levies.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Vice Chair.
I move item number three for approval as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number four, fiscal year 2026 property tax levy resolution. Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the fiscal year 2026 property tax levy resolution as shown in the agenda, which sets the fiscal year 2026, tax year 2025, primary and/or secondary tax rates for Maricopa County, the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, Maricopa County Library District, and the County Improvement Districts pursuant to the direction of each governmental entity levy the amounts of taxes and set the resulting tax rates for each as set forth in item number two of the Maricopa County Fiscal Year 2026 Tax Year 2025 Tax Levy Resolution. In addition, direct the treasurer to collect the taxes as detailed in item number three of this agenda.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously for nothing. Adoption of full cash value for bond calculation is agenda item number five. The board will now consider item number five. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number five as shown on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Also, just want to thank our budget team for everything they've done throughout this entire year. Absolutely fantastic work. You make us look good, and so we appreciate you, and thank you to the county manager and everyone that reports to you as well. This budget process is fascinating, as always. Okay, agenda item number six, executive session. The board will now consider item number six. Is there a motion to convene an executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board convene into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. We will now convene an executive session in five minutes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.